Council meeting to order and ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll please. Kenny.
Aye.
Here.
Marquise.
Here.
Belkey.
Here.
Clistic.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
MacIver.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Seven present. We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. They do not, your comments do not have to be regarding any items that are on the agenda this evening. Only items that you feel the need to ask us questions about. Does anyone in the audience want to address the council? Okay, then let's move on to the approval of the minutes of August 7th, 2017. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, second alderman Belzak. Any additions or deletions for the clerk? Okay, then the roll please. Shower.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
MacIver.
Epstein.
Marquise.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstention. The minutes have been approved. The next item is receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications to share? Alderman Kenny?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I did receive one communication from David. Says aye, and I'm, hopefully I'm not mispronouncing his last name. Had an issue with a dog approaching his property line. Had called the police department regarding the dog being loose, defecating on the property. Wanted, had issues with what the ordinance was for leash law, what have you. Chief Thomas has reached out to him and they have taken care of that.
Yes, we do have a leash law, yes. Any other communications to share? Alderman Clistic?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This past weekend, my ward had our annual neighborhood garage sale. We had twenty-seven families that participated and came out. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it due to a wedding. However, talking to Jerry Legansky was a big success. Any items that were left in anyone's garage was actually donated to the Amvets. So, anything left also helped needy families in the area and it was a big success. And thank you to Brian and John Loretta for putting it on Darien Channel 6 as well. And speaking of John Loretta, I just want to give him a quick thank you for the tour he gave myself and Alderman Belcheck before this meeting as well. I think we have a lot of residents that donate their time and efforts to making our city run and he's one of those residents that do that and sometimes maybe don't get the recognition that he deserves. So, a quick thank you to John Loretta for volunteering his time.
Yeah, we have John Loretta and Leonard, what's Leonard's list? Or Jill, I mean George Schmitz.
There we go, alright.
Joe Schmitz. There are two residents cameramen and then we have, also we have, you know, Kohoutz. What is the, Alka Media fills in on occasion too. Okay, let's, any other communications to share?
Nope, that's all I have.
Okay, then let's move to the mayor's report and I'm going to take a little liberty here. Claire, the chamber was not on the agenda this evening for an update, but since we are so close to Darien Fest, Claire wanted to address the council tonight. And after that, we'll have Jason Franken with our Darien Police Pension.
Good evening. The Darien Chamber of Commerce would like to welcome a new member, Dr. Kevin Clark from Clark Chiropractic, which is located at 2815 83rd Street in Darien. They will be opening soon. Clark Chiropractic will be participating in the Business Expo at Darien Fest, so everyone will have the opportunity to meet him. The next DCC Coffee Connection will be held on August 29th, 8:00 a.m. at Republic Bank located at 1510 75th Street in Darien. The, save the date for the annual Paint the Town Pink Ribbon Lighting Ceremony, which will be held September 30th, 6:30 p.m. at the Clock Tower. The rain date is October 3rd. The Wild Orchid Salon in Chestnut Court is hosting their first annual Breast Cancer Awareness Benefit on October 6th, 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Wild Orchid has chosen me to be the honor for this inaugural event. Tickets can be purchased in advance at Wild Orchid Salon for $25 or $30 at the door. For more information, you can call Gail at (630) 910-1011. Darien Fest is still looking for volunteers to help us execute the event on September 8, 9, and 10. You can call the Chamber office at (630) 968-0004. Online bidding is now open at charityauctionstoday.com for the Paint the Town Pink Battle of the Adirondack Chairs. Darien Fest will be held September 8, 9, and 10 at Darien Community Park. We'd like to thank our main stage sponsors, Nick Peitzer and Ryan Wallum of State Farm Insurance. Other Darien sponsors include American Academy of Sleep Medicine, Kitty Academy of Darien, Snyder Insurance and Financial Services, First Merchants Bank, AT&amp;T, Roof Tech Systems, Michael Overman, Edward Jones, James Burke, Rose Landscape Design, St. John Lutheran Church, Patio Restaurant, Clark Chiropractic, and Wild Orchid Salon. Darien food vendors this year include Nothing But Cakes, Zazzo's Pizza, The Crazy Burrito, Chuck's, Darien Lions Club, and Miskatonic. Outside vendors include Tropical Snow Days, Frank's Greek Delights, Black Hawk Seafood and Barbecue, and Lee's Concession. Be sure to support our Darien non-for-profit organizations with their fundraisers at Darien Fest. The Darien Women's Club will be selling pretzels in the Beer Pavilion. Darien VFW Post 2838 are doing pull tabs. I thought they were doing 50/50, but it's going to be pull tabs this year. Rotary Club of Darien is going to have a special giveaway fundraiser and the Darien Lions Club will have their corn tent fundraiser. This year, there will be free activities for the children on Saturday and Sunday throughout the day. The schedule of events on Friday, we're having our opening ceremony at 5:45. The Business Expo will open at 6:00 p.m. The Battle of the Adirondack Chairs will open at 6:00. We have a young generation coming in for music talent called the Millennials at 6:30, followed by the Hillbilly Rock Stars at 8:30. On Saturday, we'll open with the Adirondack Chairs, the Business Expo at 1:00 p.m. We have the pet parade, which Liz is going to talk about in a minute. Indian Prairie Public Library will be having Storytime and Crafts at 2:00 p.m. We have a local band from Darien called Fireworks for Buddha at 2:00 p.m. Fred Astaire Dance Studio will be sponsoring a dance fest on the stage at 4:00 p.m. And then our very own Michael Overman Luxury Pork will be performing at 6:30. And the headliner Saturday night will be the Ides of March at 8:30. On Sunday, we open with our Battle of the Adirondack Chairs and Business Expo at 1:00 p.m. Darien's Got Talent, which we're still looking for talent to help us out, to make the competition nice. I-57 South will be performing at 2:00 p.m. DLD Dance Studio will have a performance on the stage at 3:15. At 4:00 p.m., the Adirondack Chairs auction closes and we will close the fest out with American English at 5:00 p.m. Keep an eye out for the 30th Anniversary Trifold Insert in the September/October issue of Neighbors Magazine and you can also visit the Chamber website at darienchamber.com. Dancing with the Chamber Stars Gala Event Fundraiser will be held on November 11th at Ashton Place. The Chamber is inviting one Darien resident, male or female, 18 years plus, to perform as a Darien celebrity dancer. For consideration, call the Chamber office at (630) 968-0004.
Did you get, did you get any of the aldermen to get into this year?
I'm still working on someone. At this time, I'd like to invite Liz Husky to give an update on the pet parade.
Before you leave, Claire, I happened to meet the bandleader of the I-57 South.
Yes.
I met him just last weekend. Did you know his last name is Pinto?
No.
I said, my God, I said, the Darien Chamber president is, her maiden name is Pinto. So, you're going to have to introduce you to.
Okay, cool.
Introduce yourself.
Okay. Okay, we have Liz from Family K9, who is our pet parade chairman for the last five years. She's going to give us an update.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
What, I'm just going to take a few minutes to talk about the pet parade because I just want to bring awareness to it. It's a little bit different this year. Our flyers are going out. We have been putting them out in area businesses and just, you know, community in general. I hand them out to all my classes and just kind of getting the word out there. So, we would like to go ahead and let everyone know that it is on. It's the Saturday, September 9th. We do accept walk-ins, walk-ups during that day. At check-in is from 12 to 1:00. But if you pre-register, we do have a guarantee of a doggie bag for you, so you can have a nice little gift to take, to take home with you. In addition to our, once again, costume contest, where the top three prizes will be awarded wonderful gift baskets that are being donated by our three veterinarians in the area, Dr. Finan, Animal Hospital, Burr Ridge, and Darien Animal Clinic. They're all donating their baskets again this year, which is wonderful. They always make wonderful prizes. But in addition to that, we're getting, we're looking for any area sponsors that would be willing to donate additional gifts to be given away that day. For people who just want to come out and enjoy the parade, walk with pet, without pet, dressed or not, doesn't matter. If you come and you help by donating to the, to the charity for the walk, you can just come and have a great time and also have a chance to win. It is $10 to walk and that, a portion of that will be going to our charity. A charity this year is K9 Companions for Independence. I actually do volunteer work for them. I'm just now starting with them. They're a wonderful charity. We, what I'm going to be doing is raising puppies for this organization. And what we do is we take from eight weeks old to 18 months old, we raise puppies, volunteer only. I pay for all of the costs of raising that little puppy. And then we hand them over to the organization to begin training them for their jobs in life. They could be turning on and off lights, picking up things for their persons. Any array of disability is, can get one of these puppies, whether it be veterans or anybody else in need. And we do it all for free. These puppies are given to these people for free. So, that is an amazing charity. So, I'm glad to be, proud to be a part of it, just now entering into that. And so, that will be our charity this year, that we will be helping by having this wonderful walk. So, please get the word out and also, don't forget that anybody who wants to sponsor, we do have a couple of spaces left. We have what's called the Good Dog Sponsor. That sponsor will be able to have a booth in the fest that day by our pet parade area. And they could have, they could provide items for the doggie bags if they'd like as well. There is a Sitting Pretty Sponsor. That sponsor is for free and that sponsor is the one that we're getting extra prizes for. So far, I have a commitment from Nothing But Cakes, donating a cake for a prize, as well as, we're talking to Starbucks and a bunch of other people. I also am putting together a few baskets to give out, so that's fun. And then finally, the third sponsor we have is the Doggie Bag Sponsor to help us fill those bags with nice fun stuff for everybody who comes on out. So, just wanted to get the word out, let everybody know that that's coming on September 9th, on Saturday of the fest.
Claire, do we have that flyer? Do we have it posted upstairs?
Yeah, we're going to get it.
Okay.
Yep, we're going to get, yep.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Liz.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Claire. Okay, any questions about the fest?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, next item under the mayor's report is our Darien Police Pension Fund Report. Jason Franken, I think your company is Foster &amp; Foster? Yes, please, please come forward.
Great, thank you, thank you very much. Does everyone have a copy of the reports in their material?
Front of us? No.
It was in your packet.
Our packet.
I've got an extra.
You know, oh, I've got, I'm sorry, what am I saying? I have it, yeah, of course I have it, right here. Okay, Jason, I apologize.
Oh, no problem. If you want to open to page five, I will hit the highlights and then I'll open it up to any questions. So, I don't, I'm not going to run through all 50-plus pages of this report. On page five, we have a summary of the contribution requirements. This is our, we developed the May 1st, 2017 actuarial evaluation and those results are in the left-hand column. In the right-hand column, we have last year's results. And you'll see that there was a relatively large increase in our contribution requirement this year. It went from 1.456 million up to 1.618 million. So, it's an increase of about 174,000 or so. There's really a couple of reasons for this increase. One, the experience that we, that the plan had wasn't great relative to our assumptions. So, what does that mean? The investment return, for example, we smoothed investment gains over a five-year period. So, even though the fund earned more than 8% last year, on a smooth basis, when you consider prior year's losses, you know, we did fall short of that target. The return for the year was only 5.74%. On that smooth basis, we were expecting 7%. And so, when we get, earn less money than we were anticipating, it leads to a larger unfunded liability and thus a larger contribution requirements.
Jason, can I interrupt you right now? Is it, is it standard practice, actuarial practice, to take five years history?
Yes, yes, that is a standard actuarial.
What you called smooth out?
Yep, yep. So, the, the object of it is, the market's going to be volatile and you're not going to get 7% every single year. Some years, you're going to get more, some years, you're going to get less. And if we were always marking the contribution requirements to market, the contribution requirement would jump up and down, you know, more so than if we smoothed returns. And so, as part of the smoothing, we measure each year the returns relative to our 7% assumption. And if we get more than that, we recognize 20% of the gain in that first year. And then each of the subsequent four years, we recognize 20% per year until we've, we've recognized the entire gain or loss. And so, typically, what happens is your market, market returns bounce up and down, but since we're smoothing these over a period of time, it does, it does, you know, the contribution requirement and the funded ratio don't bounce around as much as if we were using the market value. This, like I said, this is a standard method that's used not only in the state of Illinois, but across the country by actuaries in the public and private sector. In the private sector, they've, the IRS has limited the amount of smoothing to a two-year period. But prior to the, that change, the law changed in 2006, actuaries were using a five-year period to smooth it. And in fact, the Illinois Pension Code.
And the private practice?
In private practice, okay.
Yes, yep. And in the public sector, in the state of Illinois, the Illinois Pension Code requires a five-year smoothed approach to developing the assets that we use.
That's what I was going to bring out. It's not you arbitrarily selecting the five years. It's what the Department of Insurance, Illinois Department of Insurance recognizes, is that correct?
Well, it's not the Illinois Department of Insurance. It's really the legislature who has put that into, who's codified it in, in the Illinois Pension Code.
And it works both ways. In this case, he's saying our performance was down the prior year, which it was. But if we were in excess this year, for example, we earned over 8%, which as I report to the council every quarter, we earned over 8% and yet it looks sort of ridiculous. While the attorney's saying we earned 5%. Well, this year was actually an overage. So, that's actually being smoothed and being recognized over the coming five years. So, we're not getting the full benefit of that extra percent that we earned this year.
Okay.
We're only recognizing one-fifth of that extra percent this year. But we are taking a big hit on the underperformance from the prior year.
It is a big hit.
From April of 16.
Yeah, and just to give you an idea, this year, the return in dollars exceeded our expectation by about $300,000. Because we, we earned about 8.2%. So, we earned about a percent, 1.2% more than what we were expecting. Last year, though, our return was around 0%. So, we were about 7% less than what we were expecting. Last, in last year, as a dollar amount, the loss was $1.7 million. So, that $1.7 million, we're recognizing that 20% per year. So, that is going to be a, you know, a drag on your funded ratio and leading to an increase. It's going to be a headwind and lead to an increase in your unfunded liability over time. Where, we've, knock on wood, we've been having a pretty good year so far this year. So, hopefully, we'll have another gain next year to, you know, offset that and maybe, you know, have, get, get to our 7% on a smooth basis rather than something a little bit less than that.
Is that, is that the only assumption? Are you going to go into the other assumptions that change?
Yes, yep, yep. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Okay. So, the experience was a little bit less than, you know, what we, what we were expecting. Our unfunded liability ended up being about a half a million dollars higher than what we were expecting. On the other side, if you recall, last year, we took, we took over the actuarial work last year and just due to some timing, you know, we didn't, you know, we didn't have time to really go over the assumptions and, you know, but there were a handful of them that I thought needed to change to better reflect future anticipated experience. And so, that's, you know, about 60% of the increase we're seeing in the contribution requirement this year is attributable to the changes that we've made this year. And if you flip to page seven, I will go over, you know, some of those changes. There were, really, there were four changes that we made. One, the first one was to the mortality table. We had been using the RP 2000 table, which is, which based on its name, was released in 2000. The data, the life expectancies in that table are, you know, a little bit out of date at this point. There was a new table that was released in 2014 called the RP 2014 Table. However, in our opinion, that table swings a little bit too far the other way. It overestimates life expectancies, in our opinion, based on some of the methodology that was used. So, rather than using that table, we stayed with the 2000, the RP 2000 Table. However, we used a standard projection scale to update the table from 2000 through 2017. So, you're probably saying, what the heck does that mean? And what that means is we've, we've taken that data from 2000 and reflected improvements in life expectancies that have occurred since, since 2000. So, the RP 2000 Table, we think understates life expectancy. The 2014 Table overstates it. So, we've, we've created a table that really is in the middle, that better reflects what we think the life expectancies for these, for this group of people is going to be. So, that was the first table, or sorry, the first assumption change that we made.
And that, you call that Scale BB?
Yes, Scale BB. And what that is, is that, that's a standard projection scale for mortality improvement that was released by the Society of Actuaries. So, there's nothing proprietary about this. This isn't a scale that we've made up. This is, this is a scale that was created based on millions and millions of lives. So, you know, we, we have confidence that this accurately reflects, you know, the life expectancies that, that we can, you know, that we would, that we should be incorporating into our valuation.
And Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, but you also stated at the committee meeting that that table or the, someone is currently looking at these mortality tables again, or the state, and you anticipate those new tables will be coming out in a couple of years and those will probably even bring down the mortality a little bit from the 2014.
Yeah, yes. So, the Society of Actuaries is in the process of creating new tables for public sector plans, including, we believe they will issue a public safety-only table, which would be, you know, beneficial for this, for this population. That, that table is expected to be released sometime in the next 18 months to two years. And at that point, we will, you know, examine that table and see if that's something that we should adopt for, for this plan. We would anticipate that it would be, have shorter life expectancies than the RP 2014 Table. Where it will come down relative to the table we're using, you know, that remains to be seen. I can't, you know, I, I think it'll be somewhere in the ballpark, but it's tough to say. Life expectancies could be a little higher, they could be a little lower. We just won't know until those new tables are released.
Jason, during the pension meeting, you were, you were saying that the, you think the average police officer now, we're basing the numbers that they're going to retire at 50 and live till 83?
Well, so, the average life expectancy is around, around 80 for a male, for a male member of, for, you know, for a male member of the pension plan. The average retirement age, it depends on the age, but the age of, that they're, the age of their, date of hire. But on average, we're, we're seeing people retire on average at about age 54. And so, if someone were to retire at age 54, their life expectancy would be in the ballpark of 80 to 83, yes. So, the, the average member would get about 29 years of payments from the plan on their life only. That doesn't even consider their spouse.
So, right now, and again, I'm just going, you're basing this off of actuaries over millions of different people, but not specifically to police or anything like that, correct?
That's, that's true. It does, the, the table that we are, we're using is a blue collar table. So, there is an adjustment to the table from sort of a standard population. And the purpose of that is to reflect some of the stresses that go along with, with the occupation. And on average, that the average police officer probably doesn't live quite as long as the average person who, you know, works in an office or whatever.
Actuary.
Well, that's a lot of stress in this job, sometimes.
Do they look at the historical data from that population that we're funding this pension fund for?
Well, the, the, the mortality tables are based on the entire population of people covered by pension plans. So, it wouldn't be specific to public safety, police officers, firefighters, that occupation. So, there, currently, there isn't a table that is, has been developed for that, that specific group. Like I said, they're in the process of creating that, a table like that, which, like I said, could be very useful in, in the future. But at this point, what we have is, okay, here's the general population, the mortality. We've, they, they have another subset that has the blue collar load to that. So, it reflects, you know, jobs that are higher stress, more physically demanding, you know, and that's the table that we've used to this point.
Have you ever separated out the spouses versus the police officers?
In, in terms of?
Mortality rates?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, that's something that, you know, we, we could potentially use two different tables for those different groups of people, yes. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, treasure, do we ever look, do we ever look at the historical numbers of where our personnel, you know, have hit that mortality, you know, where you're, where you're looking at, you know, where we, the cities paid them those benefits and compare them to what the actuarial numbers are?
I have not. I assume that's the job of the actuaries.
I think we've only had two police officers die at this point and I think their wives are the beneficiaries now.
And the spouses receive 100% of the, correct me if I'm wrong, spouses receive 100% of the benefit for their lives also?
Yes, so, so the, the only data that I have in the report would be just that there are 20, there are currently 20 retirees who are receiving pension payments. Their average age is 63. So, I, I mean, I don't have historical data that would say, well, there's been two or four, however many people. You know, we, we don't, when we, you know, we didn't, when we took over, we didn't necessarily get all the historical data. We received the last couple of years and so, we wouldn't be able to do that analysis to see exactly, okay, this person died at age 72, this person died at age 68, you know, we don't, you know, we don't have that data at this point. Thank you. Okay. Okay, back on page seven, the next two, the assumption changes are very similar. One is the salary scale. That is the rate at which the pay for the individual members increases. And we increased the, we, well, effectively, we ended up decreasing the liability by making this change. We went from a flat 5.5% increase. So, the old assumption was saying from day one, their hire date through their retirement date, they were getting 5.5% increases every single year. We think that was a little overstated, a little conservative. So, we changed it to a service-based table where someone who is, who's newly hired is expected to get, and then an 11% increase that first year, just, and then it grades down over time to a 4% increase. So, based on where the average person is in terms of the service level, you know, it, it, we're assuming that people are getting lower, on average, lower increases than what we were when we were assuming 5.5% for everybody. So, this particular change, lower. So this particular change lowered our liabilities, offsetting some of the increase that we saw when we increased the mortality, or changed our mortality table. The other piece is the assumed payroll growth rate. We reduced that from five and a half to four and a half, and this has the opposite effect, where when we lower that, it actually increases our contribution requirement. And if you recall from last year, this is, this is a bit, bit of a tricky issue, but this assumption determines the rate at which we pay down our unfunded liability. And at five and a half percent, we're assuming that our amortization payment, which is our mortgage payment that we're making on our unfunded liability, that the payments increase by five and a half percent every single year from now until two thousand forty. So five and a half percent compounding for twenty-three years leads to some significant increases. It's a significant, significant backloading in the contribution pattern. By lowering it to four and a half percent, our future contributions aren't going to be as large because the rate of increase is less. So since we're having fewer, smaller contributions in, in the future, we need a larger contribution today. And, and so by lowering, making that, that change, it does really increase our, uh, current contribution. Really, this is the first step that, that needs to be taken in this, in, in my opinion, needs to be taken in, in this assumption. Ideally, this was, would be more of an inflationary type number, you know, around three percent. But going from five and a half to three percent is probably too much of an increase to take in one, in one step.
Jason, what is that number that, that you're looking at for over twenty-three years right now? What is that number?
The, the amount of it? So on page eleven, the amortization payment is currently one point one million dollars. So based on our new assumption, at four and a half percent, with twenty, twenty, twenty-four years left in our, uh, in our amortization payment to get to a hundred percent funded by two thousand forty, that would increase, it would be, the two, the payment in two thousand forty would be two hundred and eighty-seven percent of what it is today. So at one point one million, that, that contribution would increase from one point one up to three point two million.
It wouldn't, okay, so it wouldn't be two point one million?
No, no, it, it's two hundred and eighty-seven percent of what it is right now. So just four and a half percent compounding for twenty, twenty-four years gets you to, you know, a two point eight seven factor multiplied by the one point one million gets you to a contribution, an amortization payment of about three point two million. So that, that's just that one piece of the contribution. So it's three point two. If your, if your normal cost just stayed the same, relatively the same, about eight hundred thousand, your, your total expected city contribution would increase from about one point six million to over four million by the time we reach two thousand forty. And by lowering this assumption, it's, it's going to bring that down, that future contribution. It's going to lower it from that four million dollar level. But in order to make up for that, you need a larger contribution today. And, and for every fifty basis points we lower that from, if we went from four and a half to four, it's going to increase your current year's contribution by about fifty-five thousand dollars. So it, it does have a, a pretty big effect on your, your bottom line contribution number.
Is this another standard actuarial practice?
Well, so there, there's nothing outlined anywhere that says what this assumption should be. Ideally, what it should reflect is how the payroll for the department is going to increase over time. And, and so using this four and a half percent assumption, we're assuming that our payroll is going to increase every year by four and a half percent. In this particular valve, last year, the payroll was three point one million, and it went down to two point nine million for this year. It, the, the number, part of that is because the number, number of actives went down. So it could be a bit of a timing issue in terms of when someone left and when there was a replacement hired. But in, in this particular year, we went down by almost two hundred thousand dollars, and we were expecting to go up by four and a half percent.
Do you agree with this, this assumption?
Well, I, I agree with what he's stating, that, I mean, our payroll did decrease because we, we haven't been at full staff, so we know that. Uh, whether it should be at four and a half percent, what he's saying probably makes sense. The long-term growth, it probably actually should come down from where it's at instead of the four and a half. And the four and a half is sort of arbitrary on his part. As he stated, it probably should be made to reflect more the current inflation rate, what you anticipate the current, the salaries to be growing at over the next twenty years. I mean, it is a long-term time horizon. If you're looking at a snapshot today, three percent sounds more in line to me than four and a half percent even. So the number should probably actually be higher. But again, you're looking at a long-term liability here. Is that to say that inflation won't kick up again in the next three, four, or five years? Everybody's been expecting that for the last several years at this point, and it hasn't happened at this point. Based on the current, current state of the economy, it would seem like even the four and a half percent is overstated to me.
Alderman, show her.
But Jason, going back to what we were just talking about, and just piggybacks off of this, your original assumption is based on the fact that the average police officer will retire at fifty-four, correct?
Well, this is, this assumption isn't necessarily reflective of that. I mean, I guess it's sort of baked into what we think the, the, is going to happen to the payroll. So from that perspective, yes, that's all sort of intertwined. So we would, when we're looking at it, with those higher, higher-paid people are going to probably fall off around age fifty-four and then be replaced with, with people who are making less money. And thus, you know, the, the payroll wouldn't necessarily grow by as much as you might think just because you have those high-paid people leaving, and they're being replaced with lower-paid people.
So I guess when we're looking at page forty-nine, and we're looking at the retirement rate table, and it says twenty percent of the people will retire at fifty-four, we're working on the assumption, or you're working on the assumption, that there are more higher-paid people that are going to be dropping off?
Well, the, the assumption for when the people are going to retire isn't necessarily based on pay, but that's just the way it usually operates, is that those higher-service people are the ones who are making the most money.
Okay, I guess, I guess the question is, is that if we're looking at this rate on page forty-nine that shows one out of every five will retire at fifty-four, what happens to the other four under the assumptions? That's, I'm trying to figure that out.
Yes, so if you look on, you look on page twenty, you don't have to go as far back. The, we have the retire, retiring percentage during the year. And it's in the far right table in the, the middle of the page. Less than forty-nine, we're not, less than fifty, we're, we're assuming nobody retires. Then at age fifty, we assume twenty percent of the people retire who are eligible. So if they have fifty years, they're, if they're tier one, if they're fifty years old and have twenty years of service, we assume twenty percent are going to retire. Then the next year, another twenty percent. Then the next year, another twenty percent. Then once it gets age fifty-five, then we assume fifty, twenty-five percent of those people retire. And, you know, continue on that. So these are really the rates, the note, the proportion of the people that we assume retire each year. So in the calculations, the way it works is if I have someone who's aged forty-nine, they're an active employee, I assume twenty percent of that person retires at age fifty. I do the calculation, what his benefit is at that point, and multiply it by point two to get to his liability. Then the remaining point eight people, eighty percent, the remaining people, or remaining portion of that person, you know, another twenty percent of that, that retires, and I go through the same calculation. So, so the, the age fifty-four, I'm not saying everyone's retiring at age fifty-four. I'm assuming some people are retiring at age fifty, and I'm assuming some people are retiring at age sixty-five. But on average, that's, we're getting to age fifty-four.
But we're also assuming that everyone will live to eighty-three?
Again, no, that's not completely accurate. We're, we're assuming portions of people die based on the probability of death at every age.
Right.
So in our calculation, we're having some people die at fifty. Some more people die at fifty-one, so on and so forth. But we're also having, assuming some people are living to age ninety. So on average, you know, I don't know if it's eighty or eighty-three. It's, it's somewhere in the, you know, those early eighties. But that's really what the, what the average life expectancy is for someone who's retiring in their early fifties. Okay? Okay, back on page seven. The, the last change that we made was to the, the cost method. We changed it from the projected unit credit cost method to the entry-age-normal cost method. This, this change is, the cost method is a, is a budgeting mechanism. It determines how we pay for an active member's pension plan over their career. So if Joe Smith is working, and I think I need a million dollars when he retires at age fifty, how am I going to go from zero, when he's hired at age thirty, to a million dollars when he has, when he has twenty years of, or, you know, when he retires at age fifty? And, and so what's in the Illinois pension code is the projected unit credit cost method. That's, that's what the statutory minimum contribution is based on, that projected unit credit cost method. Again, this cost method is a backloaded cost method. Just like the amortization approach, which is backloaded, this is a, a, a cost method that requires increasingly larger contributions as you get closer and closer to retirement. The entry-age-normal cost method spreads it out evenly over the course of a person's career. Uh, the GASB requirements, which is an accounting body, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, requires that you use the entry-age-normal cost method. The, the entry-age-normal cost method is used by over ninety percent of the public pension plans across the country because it produces a more stable and predictable contribution pattern. So again, we've, we've made that change to be consistent with GASB and to reflect a more sound approach to funding. So after all of these changes, if you flip ahead to page nine, what, what we've, see on page nine, there's three columns. There's the col- the far-right column, that's last year's results. The middle column is this year's results before any changes. So the only, only thing that's reflected there is our new population and the experience, that poor investment return that we talked about relative to our assumption, and just, just changes to the personnel. And then the far-left-hand column, that's our recommended approach based on our new assumptions and new methods. And you'll see last year, our unfunded liability, and this is the, the second from the bottom row, our, our unfunded liability was about, you know, just over sixteen million dollars, sixteen million forty-nine thousand. This year, had we not made any changes, it would have been relatively stable at sixteen point eight. But then after these, these contribution, or after these assumption changes and methods that we made, it, it does, does jump up to nineteen point one million. The, the, uh, the funded ratio sort of follows suits. It would have actually increased by one-tenth of a percent to sixty-one point five percent without the changes. But after making these changes, it's fifty-eight point four percent. Again, we think that this, this approach better reflects what we think is going to happen and also produces a more viable funding approach for the city going forward.
If we're unfunded at fifty-eight point four, how does that compare to what the standard is in the state of Illinois right now?
For, for most Article III pension plans, which are the police pension plans, the average, the average funded ratio that's provided by the Department of Insurance is right around fifty-eight percent. So it's really right in line with that. But what I will say is that your assumptions are a little more reflective of future experience after these changes than what the Department of Insurance is currently using. For example, the mortality table, you know, they're still using the old mortality table. So if it was a true apples-to-apples comparison, you know, their fifty-eight percent average would, would actually probably be a little bit lower.
And these assumptions that you're using at fifty-eight point four, how does that compare with the state of Illinois right now? With the assumptions that they're using for us, what we're at right now?
They, they're, they're a little more, uh, they produce a little bit lower. Your assumptions probably produce a little bit lower of a funded ratio than what you would have based on the Department of Insurance's assumptions. And the Department of Insurance is currently in the process of reviewing their assumptions and coming up with, with new assumptions. Those should be available at some point by the end of the year. But based on what they, they're using during two thousand seventeen, if we were to use those assumptions, you would probably have a little bit higher of a funded ratio.
So probably in the six U sixty-one, somewhere in that neighborhood?
Yeah, probably, probably a little, close to that, yes.
And on the scale BB for the mortality rate, um, how long is that scale? Just out of curiosity, because I went through this, I didn't see it in there.
The, the wealth, the scale, the scale goes, it goes forever. I mean, you could, you could use it, so there, most actuaries, um, in, well, in the private sector for sure, and increasingly in, in the public sector, they're using what's called generational mortality. And the generational mortality takes this scale and applies it forever. We've applied it for seventeen years. We've applied it from the year it was created in two thousand through our valuation date in two thousand seventeen. So that, to answer your question, we've applied seventeen years of the, of that scale to create our table. If you were, we were using generational mortality, every single year, year of birth, that is, would have its own mortality table. So someone who was born in nineteen fifty-six would be expected to live longer than someone who was born in nineteen fifty-five, who would be expected to be, be, who would be expect to live longer than someone who was born in nineteen fifty-four. We haven't gone to that level. We've, we have the same mortality table for everybody regardless of the year of birth. Uh, but we have used the scale BB to increase the mortality table, uh, the mortality rates by seventeen years.
So last question, based on our figures right now, and the assumptions that you're using, which is, I understand, the mortality rate that you're using is a little bit more higher versus the state of Illinois, okay?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's true.
Okay, I just, just was making sure about that. And then funded-wise, if we're at fifty-eight percent, and according to the state of Illinois, with an adjustment, we're probably at sixty-one or sixty-two versus what they're saying we should be at?
Potentially, yes. I, I don't have, I don't know. Let me see here. I mean, it, it, it's probably in the range of that, that middle column, so it's.
I'm sorry, not to cut you off, but how much do you think this would change if we were doing this individually per police and their spouses?
Well, I, I, what's.
Mortality rates, I mean, we're using very, we're using blue-collar mortality rates. I'm, I'm just asking that question.
So if, if we were to use a specific, a different table for the spouses versus the members, is that, is that the question?
Correct.
If, if that were the case, then it would probably, probably be back around fifty-eight percent or so. Because it would increase the liability to use that different table, which would lower the funded ratio. Fifty-eight percent is a guess, I haven't run those numbers, but it would lower, uh, lower the funded ratio from sixty-one. If we used it just where we are now, it would lo- lower it lower than our fifty-eight percent.
But the fact is, we're using, and I'm not trying to be, we're using a little bit higher mortality rates.
Well, the, you're not using higher mortality rates because higher mortality rates would mean lower life expectancy. But compared to the Department of Insurance, you're using a table that has a longer life expectancy. To sort of the general consensus on, on tables that are being used across the country, you're still using a table that has lower life expectancies than what is being used in a lot of places.
So we're using longer life expectancies for our needs here, but overall for the, you know, across the board, a little bit shorter. But we're comparing apples to oranges, correct?
Well, I, I, I think the table that we're using reflects the life expectancy that we will see with the current group of people covered under this plan.
Any other questions for Jason? Yeah, I, I'm sorry, you, you were, you're moving on?
No, that's, I mean, those, that's a highlight, and I'm here to answer your question. So, I mean, that, that's really, you know, like I said, the experience wasn't great for the year, but the vast majority of the increase is due to the changes that we made, which, like I said, last year when I was here, were, were changes that I, I think need to be made to put the, the city in a better position over the long term. It does increase the, the current contribution, but pensions are pay now and, or pay later. And to the extent that you defer the contributions into the future, you will have to, you know, your obligation will be larger than if you put more money into today and have additional investment income that's earned on that money. and have additional investment income that's earned on that money to lower those future obligations.
Mike, did you have some comments?
Yeah, yeah, I guess in closing, I guess, I mean, I've been in this position for 10 years now, and I guess if there's anything I've learned, it's actuarial science, I think, is more art than science. I don't mean it to be demeaning or anything, but as you can all tell, there is a fair amount of subjectivity in the assumptions that are used in any of this. Looking at it on, I don't know, maybe a more common sense approach, last year, the contributions between what we put in and what the police officers contributed was about $1.8 million. The benefits paid out last year were over $1.9 million. So we paid out over a million, over $100,000 more than was contributed between the members and the, the city. That doesn't factor in the investment return, so basically we're relying completely on the investment return. A few years ago, we were, the contributions were exceeding the amount being paid out by several hundred thousand dollars. So we're building up that cushion. As you go through the report, if you look at it as a snapshot, again, based on Jason's assumptions, we are, if we use last year's assumptions, we're still $16 million underfunded as of today, which means if we closed the doors today, theoretically, we'd have to put in $16 million to meet our future obligations. Making his changes increases that number to $19 million. A little bit of finessing of this percentage or that percentage, yeah, could it ever have an impact? Yes, it can, but the impact is going to be spit in the ocean or rather negligible in terms of that entire $16 or $19 million. I guess the end result is we have to trust somebody. And I mean, these numbers, I guess, are as good as anything else and at some point in time in the future. I mean, the benefits are increasing. I mean, these, these colas, I mean, everybody knows what the state pensions are like, and this is mandated. This is not something we as a city have decided to do. This is what we're mandated to do for, to have the benefit for our police officers. And again, all, so many other retirement plans in the state are, some of them are even in worse condition. This is what we're required to do. Again, could we adjust a few things to make it $50,000 less for our contribution for this year? Yeah, but again, in the whole scheme of things, we still have a fairly sizable obligation coming up within the next 25 years that we've got to try and chip away at that over that period of time. And my recommendation is always, as it's always been to you, is to fund it at 100%. That's our obligation. Again, whether some of these assumptions are plus or minus, in the whole scheme of things, they're, they're negligible in really making a dent in what our, our total obligation is.
If we're at 1.628 million contribution for this year, what are we expecting for next year?
So that's, that's a good question. If you flip back to page 11, just to give you a, a ballpark figure for where, where you'd expect to go. So, so first off, we already talked about the, the amortization, that's 1, 1,104,956. So if everything went according to plan, we got our 7% assumption, you know, all, everyone lived and died according to our mortality table, we would expect that amount to go up by, by, by four and a half percent because that's, that's our, that's our assumption. So 1, 1.1 million at four and a half percent, we would expect an increase of $50,000 on, on that. The normal cost, that's the value of the benefits being earned. You're typically, that that number trends up, so it's 700, almost 761,000. Generally, we'd see five to a 5% increase in that, that number if all things were equal. But all things are not equal because there's a tier two, which, where the benefits are much less generous than tier one. So to the extent that you have people retire or leave and they're tier one and they're replaced by tier two, you know, that number's actually, as a percentage of pay, is going to trend down. As a dollar amount, you know, in the short term, if there's just one person who leaves, it's not going to change by, by that much. So that number's going to probably remain relatively stable. Over time, it's going to trend down. But in the short term, you know, it's, that, that decrease, that savings that you'll see is, is nothing compared to that four and a half percent increase, that 50,000 dollar increase that we're expecting on our amortization payment. So, and keep in mind, that was all things being equal. So we have to get to our 7%. And I, as I mentioned earlier, we had that $1.7 million loss that we're still going to be recognizing for the, the next couple of years. So to the extent that we fall short on a smooth basis of that 7%, that would, you know, bump that up even a little bit more.
Okay, but you still haven't given him a dollar amount, what, what are you anticipating?
Oh, I, I, I can't. I, if I, if I could tell you that, I, I, I probably wouldn't be an actuary. But, you know, it's, it's, it depends on, you know, a lot of things. You know, what are the salary increases going to be? How many people are, are you going to hire any new, more people from 30? We were at 30 actives thi- this year. Are you going to remain at 30 or is it going to be higher? You know, how many people are going to die? So there's a lot of factors that go into it. I can, I can, I can, like I said, I can measure the, the one factor that I know is 50,000 increase. The other factors that I, that I can see, so the, the investment losses that are outstanding, it's, it's going to be an additional amount. If I had to guess right now, I would say it would go up by 100,000, but that is purely a guess. And it's, you know, I won't, I won't have a better idea until we get to the end of year, end of the year, and I know what the investment return is for the year. And I can look at the, the population and, and see where the salaries and the number of actives, where, where all of those things come down.
I, I think that, that's a great question. I think that's one we always want every year to look maybe at a three-year to match our three-year budget. And, you know, none of the actuaries have presented that. But just procedurally, tonight is information for the City Council report. This gets followed up with a meeting with the Admin Finance Committee in October to look at our whole tax levy, you know, our, our, our regular property tax along with this. And it gets presented to the City Council. And so what the City Council will be looking at, actually for this tax, for this levy, will affect next year's budget. And in our three-year forecast of the police pension, the number of 1,600,000 is plugged in. And the number we're chasing in the report is a 1,618,000. So that just gives the dollar perspective in terms of what we're looking at in budgeting and try to bring the, this report together. And then our three-year forecast at this point, I looked at the third year and it was estimated another 10% out. Again, that's, we put that number in, trying to be conservative in case, you know, we come in situations like this where the assumptions might change or the investments are different. But again, procedurally and, and what comes before the City Council are those couple of things.
And I'm, you know, and I can prepare that type of analysis for you in terms of if you'd like to see a three, five, you know, and we do 30-year projections for, for some of our clients. But like I said, that's not part of this exercise. I'm not, I'm looking at the snapshot and I'm not looking at future years. My estimate here this evening was just based on sort of things that I can see, um, looking at, at the, this year's valuation report. It's not, there's no additional more in-depth analysis.
Which again meets the statutory requirement of-
Yes, yeah, yeah. We're, we're determining what the tax levy recommendation is for this, this particular year.
And if I were ever to make a recommendation, I wouldn't recommend we go with that additional study because it's going to cost some dollars for him. I'd rather take those dollars and throw it in the pension. I mean, we know we've got so much that we're going to owe over time. Why waste it on some additional consulting time as opposed to throwing into the, into the pot?
Well, as you can see, we're very interested in everything because our taxpayers are going to pay, pay for all of this. So we are being very, very vigilant in watching for what they are going to have to pay.
Yep, I guess I should point one other thing out too, let's bring this out, Jason. We are, I'm recommending we fund it at 100%. Theoretically, the state's only requiring that we fund it at 90%. So we theoretically do not have to fund it at this recommended amount. It can be at a lesser amount, but again, the amount we're going to owe over some period of time, well beyond our tenure here. But, I mean, I don't believe in kicking the can down the road, but we do theoretically have some flexibility if we ever really had a financial situation with the city where we needed to. I guess we sort of always have that in our back pocket, just to keep in the back of our minds.
And Mike, that, that calculation is on page 17 of the report. The statutory minimum based on the, what's in the Illinois Pension Code is 1.381 million. You know, and that's based on the 90% funding. So it is $240,000 less than the amount that I'm recommending.
Jason, I'm sorry, what page was that?
Uh, page 17.
Page 17. Okay, if there's no other questions for Jason, Jason, thank you very much for your time.
Well, thank you very much.
Let's move to the City Clerk's report.
I have two items, Madam Mayor. Darien City Offices will be closed on Monday, September the 4th in honor of Labor Day. And our next City Council meeting will be held on Tuesday, September the 5th.
Is that right? Let's move to City Administrator's report.
No report, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Let's move to Department Head Information or Questions, Chief.
Last month, we touched a little bit about some criminal activity that had been brought to my attention via a couple of emails that were sent to me about robberies and shootings. And, you know, people see those or hear those in the news, and rightfully so, they get concerned, react with frustration, anger, or fear. And I'd like to put some of that information into perspective. We'd had nine robberies to date, three of them at a bank, two at businesses, and four individuals that were robbed. All the, of the nine robberies, all but seven have been cleared. All the ones that we're responsible for investigation, because the banks' investigation is done by the FBI, but all the ones that Darien are responsible for have been solved and the persons have been arrested in all but two of the cases. One, the suspect fled the state, and so we'd have to find them somehow. And the other one was cleared for lack of prosecution because of the way that the victim was cooperating or lack thereof. That's pretty good on behalf of the Police Department because when you look at the crime clearance rate, for the national crime clearance rate for robberies, 26%. Darien is hitting at 100%. So one of the best ways to eliminate crime, deter crime, keep crime from repeating is to take that offender off the street, and they've done that in every case. So hats off to the officers and to detectives on that, on that follow-up. When you look at trends and those type of things, three bank robberies is, um, uh, something that we would look at and have looked at, working with the FBI and with the banks on doing some training for them and situational awareness, safety, and those type of things. On the two businesses, they're not likely to repeat because they haven't repeated. One person's in custody. The other is that there's no real trend when you look at the business profile, the victim profile, the offender profile, MO profile, all those different types of things that you would look at in terms of pattern. The same is true for the individual. We had a issue with somebody looking at Craigslist and used that to set up a robbery. And our recommendation there, it hasn't repeated. Our recommendation there though is just to make the, the deal at the Police Department during business hours. Very simple, very safe to do that way. Another one occurred at, uh, it was a drug ripoff. We're not going to, police are not going to protect people that are involved in illegal activity. And one was fairly serious where a man with his wife were robbed at the gas station. So again, that has not repeated itself. None of them have repeated themselves. So it's, when you look at and hear nine, it's frustrating. But when you look at the individuals and start getting to the nitty-gritty and into the weeds of those things, it's not near as bad as hearing that number nine. Turning to shootings, another item that people pointed to in those emails I received was about the shootings. We had one in December of 2015 and then another one in July of 2017. So about 20 months apart, 20 months apart does not a pattern make. It is interesting to see that both of those shootings had to deal with drugs as an underlying causal factor. Easy advice there, stay away from gangs and drugs. I'd be flippant about it, but that is such a, a true statement. So there's not a whole lot we can do with trying to prevent those type of activities. Just stay away from those type of drugs and gangs. I talked last time about the motor vehicle thefts, or not, not motor vehicle thefts, theft from a motor vehicle. Again, just imploring people to lock their stuff up. I had an opportunity to look at a couple of other websites, Woodridge, Naperville, and a couple of others for a different reason. And all of them, almost right up front, are saying the same thing. 93%, 97%, 80-some percent of burglary to motor vehicle are due to unlocked vehicles with property in plain view in the vehicle. So again, just our typical, normal, public service announcement to please take your stuff out of your vehicle and lock it up. Also on those couple of emails that I received about the robberies and shootings, was also some request about notification. In the past, you know, we've talked about it a couple, it's been probably maybe a year ago, probably earlier this year, rather, about using Nixle. And we went away from Nixle, went to Twitter. We had 389 people on the system when we were getting notifications from the Police Department when we were using Nixle. We're now up to 522 people using Twitter versus Nixle. So it's about a 38% increase in the people that are getting notified via that process. And then, you know, Twitter, you, I think it's 150 characters or whatever the characters are, the restriction. So then we follow up with press release, Facebook postings, and Direct Connect. So, uh, so that's the, uh, report in a nutshell. And you have a full version that's posted online that you have available as well. And so if you have any questions, I'll, I'll entertain anything you have.
Donovan Guyver?
Well, thank you, Chief. I think I just recently sent a correspondence to you over the weekend. I know that we report on Darien, crimes that happened in Darien. And in this particular case, there was an armed robbery at a subway, basically that backs up to Darien Residence backyard, so-
But it was in Woodridge?
But it's in Woodridge. So my concern is that, um, you know, how do we communicate about things that happen basically right across the fence? That's in a different town to Darien Residence, just so that they're aware of, you know, the proximity of what may be happening in their neighborhood? And call that to their attention because in this case, it's a wood, it happened in Woodridge, but it literally is, you know, across the fence in a driveway to the whole neighborhood of Darien Residence.
Yeah, I looked at Woodridge, they did post it very similar to what we do. They posted it, and they don't use Twitter, they use Everbridge. It's another party that does the same type of notification. So people that are in that situation, they can obviously join Everbridge and get that notification if they so choose to.
So Woodridge doesn't communicate to Darien Police about things that, like that?
And we wouldn't release that information anyway because it wouldn't be ours to release. And they're on the same radio frequency that we are, so we responded three cars to that scene. So I think it gets very complicated because now you're going to have to look at every jurisdiction that bound, that we have boundary with, and the State Police and the DuPage, that they all would have jurisdictions somewhere near or next to our location. Try to figure out a way for them to get the information to us and then us to retweet. So we could become followers of all those jurisdictions. Somebody would have to be responsible to retweet those information.
We don't want to do that.
That gets crazy.
What about on Darien, on, on Connect, to write a list of all of these communication sites that, hey, if you're, you know, if you're, and, you know, if your neighbor, Woodridge, you may want to follow the police on this site? And maybe give a, a list for like downers and the sheriff or something like that? So people have the opportunity, if they want to, to follow that?
I understand what you're, what you were asking and listening to the chief. But I, I think that in this case, if, if Woodridge put out a Direct Connect or put out the information like that as a press release, there's no reason we couldn't take that press release and just send it out. I think that accomplishes what you're trying to do. I don't think we're, we're necessarily looking for a whole new report or, or things-
No, 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 I'm just-
Other than what, what Woodridge is an example, might have put out.
I took it differently. I didn't, I took it that you wanted more real-time messaging.
No, 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 I just, I wanted to be able to share with Darien Residence when something happens that isn't quote-unquote in Darien, but it's like-
That's easier to do.
That's an easy, yes.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, and understanding-
I think the concern was, you know, I got a couple of calls, like, did you hear about this? And I, frankly, I hadn't.
Yeah.
I, I was thinking along your, your lines that she, she wanted more present time, you know?
No, I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, that we share, like, when things like this happen. Or, like I said, if people want to follow it in real time- Or, like I said, if people want to follow it in real time, if we can give, you know, because we neighbor Woodridge, we neighbor Downers Grove, we neighbor unincorporated Downers Grove in Willowbrook, and maybe on one of the Direct Connects, just list, okay, if you want to follow the activity that goes on with this Police Department, do this. You know, give people the option to follow whatever they want to follow, too. But I think in this case, it was so close, you know, and this wasn't, I think this wasn't the first time something happened in that particular corner of retail in the last couple of years. So the concern was, it was an armed robbery, it was five o'clock on a Friday, you know, it wasn't, you know, and it was at a restaurant that had people in it, you know, with families and stuff like that, so.
And Chief, I don't know what information, you mentioned, you know, their source to put out information, and I don't know if that include, you know, how real-time that includes. That might, like, for us, we use our Direct Connect, you know, when information is available that we could put out, we don't use it as a necessary alarm until we have, right, until we have something specific.
No, 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 I know, right, right.
So if Woodridge does the same thing, again, it seems like it would be a simple cut-and-paste and just send it out. I mean, we have done that on our cable TV on a couple instances over time. There's been a neighboring community that might have had a picture of a wanted suspect. So we put it on our cable TV. And I think along the lines of what you're saying, it's probably similar to just get that general information that the community already puts out on our system to the residents.
Correct. That's what I think I'm...
Yeah, we'll work on that.
Yeah, can work on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Thomas? Thank you, Chief. Do we have Municipal Services?
No report, Madam Mayor. More than happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have questions for Dan Gombach? Okay, then let's move on to the Treasurers' report, Treasurer Corps.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting Council's approval of warrant number 171808, the amount of $816,316.11 from listed funds, payroll for the period ended August 17th, and the amount of $246,054.26 for a total to be approved of $1,062,370.37.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Any questions for the Treasurer? In the roll, please.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
McIver?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The warrant has been approved. Let's move to Standing Committee reports. Alderman Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next Municipal Services meeting is currently scheduled for September 25th, 2017, but that might change.
Correct.
6:30 or 6 o'clock is your...
6:30, here in the Council Chambers, yes.
Okay. Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our next Admin Finance meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 5th, at 6:00 PM in our upstairs meeting room.
Thank you. And Alderman McIver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe our next Police Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, September 17?
18.
18. At 6:00 PM in the City Council Chambers, but I have a conflict, so I wanted to talk to the group about it.
Okay.
I already know.
Also, I want to add that at the...
City Council Chambers or next room?
I mean, Police, Darien, yeah, the Police Training Room.
Alderman Belkey?
I wanted to add that the Police Committee meeting met today and approved the meeting minutes from May 15th, so I want to submit those to the clerk.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. All right. Let's move to questions, comments, agenda-related. Do any of the Alderman have questions? We didn't have a chance to go over the agenda in our work session. Does anybody have any questions on any of the items? Alderman Belkey?
Yes, I just wanted to throw out the question on our, let's see, which one is this? This is the Old Business A.
Okay.
And has there been any new information or any new submission for this, or was it just reopened due to that, the law, the LaSalle factors issue?
Was there any additional information?
That's the only item, was LaSalle factors. There's no new information, no.
Okay. Okay, we'll follow the same procedure as we've done before when we have a motion to reconsider. First, we have to vote on getting it back on the table, and after that, then we vote on the variation, variance after that. Any other questions or comments on any of the items on the agenda this evening? Okay, then let's move to Old Business. Item A is reconsideration of a motion to approve an ordinance approving a variation to the Darien zoning ordinance for 7620 Wilton Court. Do I have a motion to reconsider? With no reconsideration, the motion dies and the issue dies. Let's move to the Consent Agenda, and under the Consent Agenda, we have two items. The first item is a motion to grant a waiver of the $50 a day fee for the Class J temporary liquor license for Our Lady of Peace School. The next item is a motion to grant a waiver of the Raffa license bond requirement for Our Lady of Peace. For those two items on the Consent Agenda, do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Clistic, seconded by Alderman Belkey. The roll, please.
Clistic?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
McIver?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The two items have been approved. Under New Business, the first motion is to approve an ordinance granting a minor amendment to an approved planned unit development at crossroads of Darien to allow Clark chiropractic. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Belzak, and I understand you discussed this this evening.
Each of these items was discussed and recommended by the Municipal Services Committee tonight.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on item A? Alderman Belkey?
Yes, I have a question. I guess I'm just trying to fill in more of the blanks for, it's a minor amendment, not a major, and so the minor would be, originally, there was no medical facility to be present, and I just am thinking what the reason might have been.
Bottom line is that a minor does not need to go back to Planning and Zoning Commission and go right to the Municipal Services, followed by the City Council. In the grand scheme of things, this is a minor change to the entire development of what is being proposed here.
It's not, it's not, it's not about medical, because there are other medical uses in this, yeah.
This is a unit that's been vacant for at least 18 months.
It was a curves, I understand?
Correct.
The curves. So this is an opportunity to have a 1,400-foot space occupied and being used.
Any other questions?
So, why, why does it have to go before the council?
Because the use itself is not a retail use, and it doesn't allow for it to be in that retail, in that retail mall.
Right. I think, to Alderman Belkey's point, I think she's asking why originally was medical...
Didn't seem right.
Why wasn't it in there?
Why originally they excluded it, basically?
Why was it originally...
That was part of the planned unit development and their plan...
It's just that they wanted retail.
Correct.
It's typical...
Oh, in that building?
And... Sales tax. Yeah, it's typical that, you know, like, we have for other properties, when these are developed, the city's eyeing sales tax revenue at some point, and I don't know specifically this development, Dan, but typically, it's restricted to some use. That's a goal of the City Council at the time. And then over time, depending if you could fill things or not, that could get adjusted. But that, that's the typical reason, I believe.
Right, and that question was also brought up at our Municipal Services Committee meeting. My response at the time was, well, 83rd Street fronts those stores, so again, the City Council probably had the foresight back then to say, let's create all this as part of retail. Again, with the space that's being presented, that's left here, it's really one of those awkward spaces, similar to Darien point, like Alderman Marques brought up at our committee, or it's similar to that. And again, the person or the landlords was here this evening or is here this evening in regards to how long it's been vacant, which you said about a year and a half.
Any other questions on this item? Item A? All right, then the roll, please.
Marques?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
McIver?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The motion has been approved. Item B is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a proposal from Allied Door for the following scope of work at the Public Works Facility located at 1041 South Frontage Road in an amount not to exceed $40,332.70. And I believe that's the doors, and I think that's about it, isn't it? Just the doors?
Correct, it's the doors, along with one replacement of eight doors and one being repaired.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Shower. Discussion? Then the roll, please.
Marques?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
McIver?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion has been approved. Item C is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept the proposal from Carlson Enterprises for an exhaust system for the Public Works Facility at 1041 South Frontage Road in an amount not to exceed $14,500. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman McIver, seconded by Alderman Shower. Discussion? The roll, please.
McIver?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Seven ayes.